Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 3 meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of the exits around the room and now join us as we salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, a quick housekeeping note. We had another resignation from our board. Frank Marsidiano has resigned, stepped down. I want to thank Frank for his years of service, his intelligence and his dedication to viewing everything thoroughly while he was up here. He will be missed, and I believe he's meeting at Rhinebeck, so congratulations, Rhinebeck, you're getting a great citizen. The first item on the agenda is a new public hearing for Hyde Park Truck and Auto Group. May I get a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Tyrums, you're here.
Yes.
As background for everyone, we've been workshopping this project off and on to make some improvements before we thought it was ready for the public hearing. In the meantime, we circulated to Douglas County Planning who responded with some comments that said that it was a matter of local concern, so there's no supermajority required. And some of the comments that Mr. Clark wrote from County Planning had actually already been addressed in its second iteration of plans by Mr. Tyrums that included reducing the width of the drive aisle, adding more landscaping, et cetera. That's all been done. I want to thank you for your last submission. And in the meantime, we circulated to various other agencies who have 30 days in which to reply. That includes Department of Health, New York State Department of Transportation, and the Douglas County Water and Wastewater Authority. We're still waiting to hear back from them. We did hear back from Roosevelt Fire Department, who said no issues, and we've already heard back from County Planning. Mr. Tyrums, do you want to add anything to all that?
No idea.
Then, just a couple of quick questions before we turn it over to the board for comments before we hear public hearing. You submitted a sign now. I believe that it shows 96 inches, which would be eight feet tall.
Yes, eight feet tall.
The maximum height under our sign code is six feet, and you can go up to seven with decorative elements. But it looks like the top -- if anybody can see this, the top bar would be decorative, but the sign goes up, I think, much closer to it. So, in other words, anything above six feet above this would be allowed up to seven. So these blue bars, the actual sign itself needs to be a maximum of six.
Okay, so we thought there was 20 square feet of panel allowed, so we had two 10-square-foot panels.
Right, but there's a height requirement, too.
It's the height.
There's also a height requirement on top of the square foot.
Okay, so the maximum height at a sign is seven feet.
Six feet, and you can have a foot extra for --
Ornamental.
Ornamental, like the part of the sign, not the actual sign itself, but like brackets or something.
It's not showing anything ornamental there.
Just sort of something, you know, a little top, but they just -- the whole sign needs to be lowered down. It looks like two feet.
Okay, we will get that adjusted.
Thank you. And then, in the interim, we had a comment from a neighbor, Ms. Kazmery, who lives to the -- I believe it's written here west, but I believe it would be or south, I think it's west of the property.
Yes, west.
Her first comment, just for the record, is that the owner of the trucks that are on the property, they're left running all night, overnight, and that fumes from the trucks go over to her property. I don't know why anyone would do that, because it's a hideous waste of fuel.
Diesel in the cold weather.
It's against the environmental laws, too.
Yes.
Maybe she means...
We know in the past John has run part of his construction company out of those sites, and he has now moved into Poughkeepsie with his construction business.
That makes sense.
With the truck and car rental, I can't imagine if that was a fact in the past, that would be an issue here with car rental or used car sales.
No, I think that's probably -- she was referring to some of the construction use that was there. Okay. The second was the concern about lighting. Ms. Kazmery states that the current light on the property shines brightly at her house at night. I notice in the new foot candle plan you presented, it goes down pretty close to zero at that edge of the property. There's one, the southwest corner, where there's next to a structure showing 1.0. Is there a way we could shield that a little so the light doesn't show down back on her side?
I think it's about here. This is the new one, and it looks like it's down .45.
It goes down to .45, so...
I mean, there was a shield that the lighting company had that went on this in the cut sheet, but it doesn't -- I could see maybe they could add some other type of black sheet metal on it to...
Yeah, it's just -- most of it goes to zero. It's just that one corner. It's already been brought down to .45.
Looks like it has, yeah.
Yeah. If they can get it down lower -- it's supposed to go to zero at the edge of the property, so they get it down a little bit lower. I know Ms. Kazmery would appreciate that. And that's all from me. Chris, any comments?
Again, I think it's going to be a huge improvement to what's currently there, and, you know, you've taken our comments pretty serious, and I appreciate the changes you've made.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dexter?
I echo that. I do appreciate the slight changes. They'll make a big difference, you know, the additional landscaping and just some of the tweaks that were made. I think it'll be an even better project.
We had help from Tad Moss, her landscape architect, her bachelor.
Yeah, that always helps.
That helped. We took her advice and put it on paper.
Just to stress, one of the things that we did in our meeting was we emphasized the use of natives so that they could withstand drought and lack of watering. The plants are supposed to be kept watered, as you know, until they're established, but we've had such wacky weather lately between long dry spells and then heavy inundation that it seems prudent to go ahead and use plants that can survive those kinds of spells. So, Mr. Murphy, any comments?
Just that I hope they do this plan the way it's drawn on paper and get a CO based on the inspection of this being an accurate plan. Previous problems with COs next door. And, you know, I'm a little skeptical as to whether they're going to actually build this the way they say they're going to build it, but I hope they do, and I hope the town holds their feet to the fire.
Thank you. In other words, please no field changes unless you inform Ms. Moss along the way.
Yeah, I don't -- I mean, I'm not the owner. I'm representing them.
Yeah, I understand.
But I will convey that message and your concern to Mr. Lombardi, and, you know, stress to him the board's desire to make it look as nice as it does on the front.
It's going to look -- it's going to be a big improvement for that kind of empty vacant parcel there, so at least that's what it appears like to me.
He owns the whole section there, so it should just improve the businesses he's got there.
Or his wife owns the whole section.
Oh, yeah.
If you don't mind, you can stay seated there, but I'm going to have you push the microphone the other way so that any member of the public who'd like to speak can come up. Just identify yourself into the microphone, please. Either one. There's a -- okay.
I am David Frati. I own Four Morgan Circle.
Could you please take a seat and speak into the microphone?
It's being televised, so...
Thank you.
Okay. I own the property that is right next to Mrs. Kazmery's place, and within the next year to year and a half, I hope to acquire her property as well.
Okay.
We do currently have a tremendous issue with not one of the properties that John Lombardi owns, but the automotive service next to it, SRS. They have a high-intensity light mounted to the pole, which I was in here on Monday. They say that the codes allows nothing higher than 16 feet. I believe it's probably higher than 16 feet and of such high intensity that it illuminates my backyard to the point where if at night I try to walk through my backyard, I cannot even see where I'm stepping, that the light is that.
They're simply a tenant of Mr. Lombardi, are they not?
No, no, no.
Oh, that's the building in front. Building in front, different property. Got it.
Yes, yes.
It sounds like one of those central -- remember we had it with the Deer View Deli, where they had mounted the really, really bright light at the top of the pole?
Central Hudson sells these, or I should say rents these to various property owners with the idea that creates more safety. They're not approved by the planning board typically, because we wouldn't allow them. And the best way to approach that -- Eddie, did you file a complaint in the office?
No, I got paperwork Monday, and I am going to file...
I was going to say, because if this is not on Mr. Lombardi's site, there's nothing we can do about it. But this sounds like what might be causing Ms. Kazmery to have the same problem.
Yep.
Is another light that's off his site. So if you file formal complaint, then the zoning administrator, who's also our enforcement officer, can go out, take pictures, and then send them a notice of violation, and that's the best way to handle that.
Okay.
There's nothing, in other words, we can do, because we can't require any surrounding property to do anything as part of this process.
Okay. I've seen the plans that you have, and if everything were to be done correctly, yes, it would make a very attractive addition to Mr. Lombardi's property, but it would be more attractive if it wasn't someone else's yard. I'm sure that you would not want your property to be backed up to businesses. We have the new firehouse, which is going to be coming online soon. Going to have tremendous noise from that, and really don't need any more noise or extra lights. And I'm sure that you are going to light your property extremely well, so that if there is anybody trying to vandalize it or anything, you would know right away.
Actually, we've -- that's -- this is one of the things that we've been discussing with the applicant, the applicant's representative, Mr. Tyrums, along the way. He submitted a new foot candle plan that shows the -- our sort of concern was -- thank you. The concern was that the property to the north, there was light spillage over there. Like I said, there wasn't light spillage going down per se. Would -- are you to Mrs. Kazmery's north or to her south?
I think they're to the south.
Okay, so you're behind all the rest of the businesses. That's right. Yeah, that's right, sorry. Okay. Again, all we can do is deal with the subject parcel, but Ms. Moss can handle anything else that's over there that might not have been approved and therefore is technically not legal. But what we were doing is trying to get the lighting down by the property line down so that it didn't trespass over to the north, and they successfully done that, it appears. And there's a little bit of light that spills over to the front, but that's going to be over a sidewalk, so that's safety.
Yeah, that's actually acceptable.
It improves the safety. I don't have any of the foot candles on the next parcel, which would be the one that is above yours, because again, that's not part of this. But that will come back in at some point. When it does, we can take a look at it then. And I understand why you wouldn't want to have a commercial or more commercial development, and all I can do is apologize and say it's allowed by the code. This is a commercially zoned property, and this is a separate parcel, so Mr. Lombardi is free to develop it. We've been working with them to make sure that there's less previous coverage, so that there's no stormwater issues. But that's all we can do within that framework, is make sure that we have the best development we can in terms of architecture, landscaping, like trespass.
We try to minimize the impact to the neighbors.
Yeah, we're trying to minimize the impact on the neighbors, but there's only so much the board can do once it's allowed under code. So we feel as though we've been working with them, and they've, as Mr. Oliver pointed out, they've been responding very nicely back. Any of our concerns, they've addressed pretty rapidly, so we think it's going to be -- we actually think it's going to be a more attractive property, too. In terms of the noise, I don't think that the rentals are going to add a lot to it. You're going to have car and sales, I mean, car, truck, and truck rentals and sales, but it's a small lot, and there's only room for so many cars. I'm not sure you're going to have a lot of excess noise there. Certainly less than what was originally proposed and almost was approved by part of our board. That would have been automotive repair, another automotive repair shop there.
And also there are hours, too.
Yeah, their hours of operation are only very long.
So, like I said, we're citizens, too, like you just said, so we try to protect the citizens as well. And there's required screening, but the screening already exists there, because there's a fence that, you know, runs along the Kazmery property line, so that's all we can ask for there. We, like I said, asked for more landscaping along the southern and northern sides to soften the appearance of the site and also to provide noise attenuation, like the fence does, et cetera. So we've tried, in other words, as far as we can go.
But if there's issues, you come back to us, all right? And, you know, if this isn't built the way it's supposed to be built, you come back to us, and we'll handle the issues, okay?
And if there's anything that you think, as like I said, a violation, fill out a form.
Yeah.
Those don't go ignored, I promise. They're tracked afterwards, as Donna can tell you. There's a whole folder when a complaint's made, what the results are, and the letters are sent back to the complainant. Only if there's found to be no violation. If there's a violation, then it's pursued. Sometimes not all the way to court, because that's a different decision that we don't make. The town board and the zoning officer, or zoning enforcement officer make that, because when you go to court, it's expensive, and there's only so much money the town budget has for enforcement. But they do enforce, and particularly if there's a bright light that's causing you to not be able to use your backyard safely, that's a pretty strong violation.
Right, okay.
So good luck with it. Anything else you want to bring up?
No, those were...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Frati.
Objections, I wish to voice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I know everybody, you know, is entitled to have a business, but in your residential areas, you really don't want a business built.
I'll add, the old code used to require a certain distance of buffer. It couldn't be developed, and when the code was changed back in 2005, that was dropped. Just now, all we do is put in screening.
Screening, yeah.
So there used to be, in other words, a physical buffer, I think it was 20 feet, and that got changed, so and we're not allowed to -- all we can do is enforce the code as written. So we initially looked at how, where the cars were parked in the back, how close they were, but there's a section of the code that just deals with auto sales that overrides other sections of site plan, and so he's allowed to keep them five feet from the back fence. And there'll still be the five-feet distance for separation, and the sales area is far enough away that I don't think you'll even hear conversation, to be honest with you, above what you already hear, put it that way.
Okay.
Thank you for coming out. We always like it when citizens come out. Anyone else?
Hi. Martino. I live on Franklin Road, and this is going to be in, I guess I'm going to refer to it as a plaza, because it's a number of commercials.
Right.
And it also has Clancy's in the front, and I'm happy to see that it's expanding. But I have some questions. I know that there's a northern curb cut that was used for the trucks at the northern end of that property. And I also know that the traffic allows you to go from the northern, swing around, go the length of that recessed, and then come out along the side of Clancy. And my concern is that this might be an opportune time to look at the traffic flow in that whole general area and maybe work with DOT, even though they cleared it. But Franklin Road has had its incidences of little accidents trying to exit Franklin Road. If you look at Clancy's, there is no curb cut. It's just the expanse of an open parking lot. So as you're trying to exit Franklin Road, you're using your blinkers, but cars traditionally don't use their blinkers as they're leaving a parking lot, so it's hard to determine which way they're going. And that has caused problems in the past. And so knowing that that might build up a little bit more, I'm just asking the planning board to expand, you know, your look, try to decide if maybe you can add some better clarity to curb cuts, so that it's safer for Franklin Road residents and for the Roosevelt and anybody leaving, safer for the people coming out from Clancy's, and also for the traffic that can swing around. And also, please, I know the fire department is going to get rid of that passing, but there is a passing marking that you can pass cars along Franklin Road, that whole area. And with traffic going from Franklin Road, from Clancy's, pulling in, pulling out, maybe that's something else that the planning board can go to DOT and just ask for advice, ask for recommendations, and look to see what can be done to maximize the protection of the traffic flow in that area.
Traffic is always -- which we traffic safety is a big issue for us. The one problem, and I'll repeat it from the last, speaking to the last gentleman, the Clancy's parcel is a separate parcel. So nothing that has to do with this particular project, because it's a separate parcel. We could, we're not allowed to...
It's an off-site.
It's the off-site improvement, which is not allowed.
And that driveway on the side of Clancy's that goes to the back, is that also part of...
That's part of the Clancy's site.
Okay, okay.
So what happens is...
Yeah, all right.
This will have its...
Did you ever check with DOT to see if there was supposed to be a curb cut there?
No, no, because, you know, I talked to DOT once...
They've required curb cuts for a lot of years.
Yeah, and I did talk to DOT about the passing years ago, and they said, oh, no, as an individual, that has to come from the town, not from me.
See if you can find out from DOT whether or not there was, when they got their approvals, a curb cut, because they've been doing that for a lot of years. I can't believe that they wouldn't have a curb cut there. So maybe a non -- in other words, the site may have to have that curb cut.
Okay, and then we can just retroactively go back and then figure it out from the time.
And I was going to say, this is the curb cut for this particular project was actually approved a while back.
Okay, and that's the northern entrance?
Right, the northern entrance. Well, to us, because it's just one parcel, it would be the only, you're supposed to go in and out that same one, but there is a connection, a pass-through.
Yes, yes.
That's going to remain, and that's actually encouraged in our code between parcels. This is a little funny, because the parcels are all...
Interconnected.
Well, they're owned by one person. But legally, we're not allowed to treat it as one big site. It's just whatever the parcel is.
Okay.
So you would still be able to, in other words, probably go through...
Yes.
And exit that way through Clancy's, where it's a little mishmashy.
Yes, yes, and unfortunately, it's opposite Franklin Road, which creates problems and safety issues.
I figured, I mean, I don't live over there, obviously you do, but I figured that people would probably, if I lived there, I'd probably go back around and come out on Havlin, where I have the light, because that's...
During certain hours, I do.
One way to get out, yeah.
But I am surprised at how many people, when I'm making a right-hand turn off Route 9G, because I know, I know the traffic patterns, and I'm surprised at how many people do not know that they can do that, and they're still trying to make a left-hand turn from Franklin Road during rush hour.
You're talking...
And they're there, and they're there, and I think that's probably why the accidents happen. They get antsy, they get antsy, then they find the spot.
Close their eyes and pull out.
It's analogous to here, where I live, when people come out, most people who live in Cromwell Acres, or the villages it's sometimes called, will go to the road that has the light in front of, because it's easier if you can take a left. But invariably, if I think, oh, I can go down Cromwell today, right before I get there, someone will pull up from the bank and take a left, and I just wait and wait and wait and wait and wait and wait.
And then you get impatient, and unfortunately, you make bad decisions.
Usually, people in front of me, if they wait too long, will suddenly realize they take a right and then take a left into McDonald's and come back around or something.
It's actually faster.
But we are waiting, by the way, to hear from DOT. They're one of the agencies that have not responded, so if they have concerns, I mean, I'm going to guess that because this is a low-intensity use, people would just be coming in grad, you know, at various times, so they're not going to make us do a traffic study. But if they have concerns with, and if you've brought them up particularly about any accidents that have occurred there, they may, we'll see what they have to say, because we like to work with DOT.
And if they ask me, can I just say I was referred to them?
Yes.
Sure.
By the way, when they say the town has to come forth about the turn lane there, that literally wouldn't be the planning board unless there's a project in front of us. The town board or representatives of the elected officials could probably go to DOT and say we're having a...
Yes, I know Roosevelt Fire, they're addressing it.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
They're going to have to, yeah.
Station, but it should, you know, they should eliminate it, that whole length.
Yes.
Because it pulls in a number of roads that...
Too many conflicts.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, oh, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? There being any further comments from the board? We need to wait and keep this open for two more weeks to allow all the agencies to respond, so make a motion to adjourn this to July the 17th.
June.
June 17th?
Yes.
That's what I said, June 17th.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tyrums. I looked through everything. All I could find was the sign problem and a little bit of the light, that's all, so good job.
We probably have that issue, so we must have missed something.
Good job, otherwise, and maybe it's mislabeled at 96 inches, but...
I think that's...
Okay, thank you. So we'll see in two weeks, and we think that'll be the end.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda is a new public hearing for St. James Antiochian Orthodox Church. Make it a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Want to come on up? In this instance, we had a workshop meeting, and again, all this being proposed here is to change the two front spires, to raise them so that they're approximately equivalent to the main dome in the rear rather than low, as Mr. Tyrums explained in last meeting. This is done to make it even more traditional than what it was. I'll let you turn it over. I'll turn it over to you, though.
Okay, as I had stated at the last meeting, the intent is to extend the towers on each side to create a belfry type of appearance. As I said, it was inspired by Mr. Neshiwat's travel and his view of the Orthodox churches that exist overseas, and so he wanted to mimic that. And the goal here is to reuse the existing domes at about 15 feet to the structures. We're also taking the stone down to a certain level, because there's some water issues that they're having regarding that decree, the new elevations. The exterior finishes are going to match that which exists, which is an Ephesus appearance, and the new domes will be installed on top. There will be no bells in these. There may be a speaker, which will be used at only special religious occasions, which is going to be very rare, so...
Any questions from the board? Would anyone like to speak about this application? Okay. No comments from the board? No comments?
No comments.
Well, just then for...
I mean, I drove by the site again, and I can see how that would definitely augment that building more.
Well, again, in the older Orthodox faiths, everything was threes because of...
The Holy Trinity.
The Holy Trinity, and they're meant to be closer, more parrotive, the heights. That's why the dome, as God the Father, would be the tallest. So again, I don't see any issues. We did refer this to Douglas County Planning as required by law and to Fairview Fire, based on Mr. Roniger's comments, and we have not heard from either one, so we can just adjourn this one also to June 17th, make it a motion to do so.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
I know, you had forwarded over a...
We did get planning, I'm sorry. We didn't get Fairview. That's what it is.
Right, we didn't get the fire department.
We're still waiting for Fairview.
Correct. Fairview, you've not heard from.
Sorry, we did get County Planning back, which, again, I didn't think there'd be any issues. There aren't. So we'll just adjourn this over to the next meeting.
Okay.
And then we'll see you in two weeks, and we'll consider, if they haven't replied by then, they will exhaust the three-day time period, so, okay.
Okay.
Thanks for coming in.
No problem.
I didn't think we'd hear public comment, but sometimes we do from various neighbors.
You never know.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the release of escrow for Dalbo and Viani. May I get a motion to release the final amount, which is 40880?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And for the record, the reason why this wasn't done earlier was because there was a final bill, and Mr. Dalbo authorized an exchange from one amount to the other, so the final bill was paid off. And that plan is done now. Then last on the item is, last item on the agenda is, we received a request from John Riley for custom use for the extension, and what had happened is that the original owners, because this project goes back to 1996, some of them had passed away. Anyway, they weren't willing to put forth more money. It was closed on, and now the bank, Key Bank, is working with a new owner. We'd required before we did another extension that there be a redelineation of the wetlands as well as DEC certification, that they agreed. The wetlands have been delineated, as I understand it, but they were waiting for the DEC. The extension approval lasted until July 7th, so Mr. Riley asked me to put it into the record tonight, that a timely petition had been submitted. I was going to ask us to see if we wanted to set a public hearing for July 1st, but now that I've reconsidered, I'm not sure how long it'll take the DEC, so what I'd like to do is just put this, considering, I would like to put this onto the agenda for the next meeting to consider setting the public hearing. I'm waiting to hear back from Mr. Riley to see if he wants July 1st or July 15th. Since he's made the request in a timely fashion, the extra week is going to make a difference legally. So this, we won't have, we won't set a public hearing, but I just want everybody to know this will be coming forth shortly. And if you didn't receive the notice of the petition that Mr. Riley submitted, then let Donna know. You should have, so...
Yes, I have it.
Any other business? If there being none, may I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And thank the three of you for coming out tonight, and thank the media committee as well. Good night.
Thank you.